This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the regular February 6, 2023 council meeting order at 7:00 P. M. All rights for the pleasure of the reasons.
My pleasure to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? If not, would anyone like to make a motion except the agenda as written?
I'm going to accept it as written.
So moved. Is there a second? Second, seconded by Counselor Webb. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Counselor Ash.
Aye.
Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Counselor Wagner.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Any presentations tonight? Moving right into Mayor's report. So every once in a while, I like to do what's called a packet trivia.
And for Counselor Wagner, that's not a, have not participated in this before.
No.
I actually, is Counselor...
I've heard them on your recordings.
Oh, sure. Okay.
Yeah, very familiar.
Okay, I'm gonna start with Counselor Norman. Oh, I'll ask you tonight. Okay. There's approximately six cities in Columbia County area. And, and I'll get right to it. How many out of those six cities have a completely tobacco-free zone in their city parks?
That didn't retain in my brain.
Okay. Four. Correct.
I was just raising my hand. I actually knew that.
Stuck in my... Yeah.
That was in my...
Okay. Counselor Wagner.
No. Forty-two.
Yeah. Give the, give the general intent of the 5% rule in relation to the decrease or increase of our water and sewer rates.
Yeah. I, I, let's see, four.
Very good.
Cities, four cities have tobacco-free zones. So what I will say, I'm not gonna be able to answer that question because that is just a lot. Oh. Yeah, I don't, I have no idea.
Trying to give you...
I know, smoothing. It makes it easier to...
I'll take it before I buy my own.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
It's to smooth the roller coaster of rate increasing and decreasing into a predictable, gentle...
To keep...
So, but, 5%.
Right.
So, but the question is, well, I'm not gonna ask a question.
What's the intent?
That's the intent.
That's the intent. And you're, you're gonna probably learn more about it tonight.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Counselor Ash.
Forty-two.
How many, let's see. How often does a city service their moving vehicles?
Every six months.
Very good.
I found the aisle back.
Wow. I asked my wife that tonight. She got that too, regardless of mileage. So, very good. I'm impressed.
Thank you. It's osmosis.
You're gonna probably get this, Counselor Webb.
We should be able to volunteer the ones who know.
What is the EPA nationwide water usage monthly rate?
Consumption, yeah. I thought it was a range, with seven to 10,000?
Pretty close.
Seventy-seven to nine thousand.
Okay.
Okay.
I was hoping you were gonna ask me how many gallons ours was.
You got the easy one.
Forty-eight, eighty-one.
Well, I'm sure you know of Vernonia's monthly average.
Forty-eight, eighty-one.
Right. I didn't...
I'm not up to forty-nine hundred.
Gotta keep it down.
We don't build the, the tens of the gallon.
Okay. Guys did pretty good tonight.
Good question.
Anybody wanna ask me a question?
Now you know, guys know you can. You should stock up for next one.
Yeah, yeah. How often does the city of Vernonia clean their reservoirs? We've been known to do it every five to eight years.
That should be business best practice.
Right.
So it's probably more than that?
Yeah.
Yeah, what was it?
Twenty...
Twenty, yeah.
Over two.
We discussing that.
Okay. Any Councilor Committee meeting reports?
I attended parks. Doesa also attended parks. It was very informative. She presented on next steps for the campground design process, which we'll be talking about tonight. So, swarming a selection panel to go out for bid. And they approved the final version of the new parks brochure. So we are getting that ordered to be printed. And it's gonna go at, I think, locations around town and then also up at Stewart, where they refer people to us when their campground is full. And then also maybe a couple of the main trailheads on the trails. Hoping that that brings a little more awareness to the area, like with our amenities that we have to offer in our camp. I don't think really anything else. Not a lot of action items this month.
So, we had a Public Works Committee meeting. It was a pretty, pretty good meeting. Committee's starting to get their feet under them a little bit more with the new cure, getting used to running meetings. I'll just briefly run down what all went on. They did briefly discuss the salary cap, the understanding that there, you see, through the budget process or individuals coming to council, it's not Public Works Committee per view. Just a brief discussion on the Madison Avenue sidewalk. The Public Works Committee will be reviewing that in April when the end of our
Measurement.
Measurement time period's up. I'll just briefly touch, they discussed the results of information on reservoir cleaning. Sheila got most, gathered most of that information for the committee, put the table together. Very good work. A lot of other cities around us are horrible. Water sources and tanks. Sheila was elected Vice Chair in the Vice Chair position. We have somebody to run meetings in case of absenteeism. We had a talk about the dark sky certification. I think one of the questions was, look to see if the city had any, if the city already had an ordinance pertaining to that or not.
Well, Title IX does address light emitting off your property.
Yeah.
So...
We, yeah, so that, you know, depending on, again, whether the council wants to pursue, I don't know. We need to understand it better, what all the parameters are for certification, if it's worth, worth the city's time to pursue that or not.
Right.
Be something we need more information on, how hard it would be to obtain. But again, in the same vein, I think a lot of people probably agree that the intent is, is good.
Yeah.
A lot of people living out here like to be able to look up and see the night sky. If we don't take care of our light, we won't be able to, so. So there was that. There was also, I think, a bike-friendly certification program that Michael brought forward to us. It might be an easy one for Vernonia to fit into with all the trail system. That's another one. It's just further investigation. Let's see what's involved. I was kind of pushing, well, if we can fill in the blanks for the city administrator here and not create a bunch of work on our staff to get these, well, it's one thing, but, so...
Well, and just for you guys' information, I finally got a meteorologist assigned to me for the storm-ready city certification from three years ago, and I responded to that person, and I haven't heard back from them again. So some of these things are great ideas, but the functionality or like the actual, it's kind of like, that one's been on my desk for three years, and what's the point? Like, what does it get us? What does it do for our citizens? And I'm just kinda like, I keep trying, but, yeah, so. That would, might need to come into account too, and if our, and maybe just giving council, what does Title IX say about lighting? And does that, is that, do you guys think that's sufficient? You could strengthen that language and still not be dark skies at night certified. Because I think that means you're kind of overarching, kind of going retroactively as people replace things. You're forcing them to bring it into the new standard, which is kind of, also will be a taxing thing on the staff, should we do that? So you gotta kind of think of all the avenues.
Yeah.
And what the end result is, and is it worth our effort and money, or is what we have doing what we want, kind of? Yeah. I'm all for that stuff, but it's frustrating when, I mean, I, the guy was like, I'm your meteorologist. I'm like, great, when do we meet? What are you for for me? I filled out the thing, and then radio silence. And I'm like, dang it, I just got a guy, and I was so excited, but...
Rattling his cage.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, there's a bigger picture to some of these. Whether they're, you know, it costs staff time to do these things. We're gonna be rolling into some major projects here in the next couple of years. And seems like we've got some day-to-day stuff that's eating our lunch, that's taking a lot of time, so we gotta be careful. So again, I think, get the information, get more clarity as to just what it takes, what effort it's gonna take, and then make a decision. We wanna move forward or something. Anyhow, and then, and then the main topic that they're working on is the sidewalk connectivity, kind of a, we're calling it a master plan, whether it's a true master plan or not, but so, and again, Sheila's done some great work of kind of developing a framework for our process. So we're starting out with the city, city's walking infrastructure, the philosophy. So we kind of have a guiding principle of what we're trying to do. Existing conditions, desire lines, origins, destinations, prioritization, design guidelines, which should follow what we have in the book, I would hope, or identification of projects, and then also identifying funding resources. So, committee's starting to work down to the left on that and move that project forward. Ben printed out some more mapping for the committee. So, work in progress. I think that's it.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. Any others?
Library was postponed till next month. So, this month? This month.
February.
February. So I just need to know when it is, so he can show up.
I will be attending a senior board meeting this coming Friday, the 10th, 10:00 A. M., so. Report back on the 21st, I believe. And Cemetery Committee Board Meeting's been postponed until, I believe, March sometime. Okay, anything else? No airport?
No.
No. Okay. Topic from the floor this evening. None. Okay, cassette agenda for acceptance. Parks Committee Meeting Minutes for November 2022. Found on page one through four.
I moved to accept, present agenda for acceptance.
One, oh, yeah, one comment. See Jason on item nine B, talking about bricks, Jay. Is the committee aware of kind of how that works?
Well, I, I did bring it up to them and told them that, you know, the price is probably more than it was way back when because of engraving, but, that it was through, my connection through it was Donna. Is there a different group now?
Oh, yeah. I don't know if that...
He kind of just talked about how not very many had been done recently because the cost is up, and then it takes someone to kind of champion that through.
Yeah, and then he's, okay, and I seen a question about putting more bricks down, and I thought that's, I think it was the bricks are there.
It's just getting engraved.
When Donna was doing it, it was, she'd have to wait till there was like 20 orders and
Then have them all.
fast memorials.
Yep.
Come out and do the engraving, and I don't know if he, sounds like maybe he doesn't, but I'm sure you could contact probably a different engraver to...
Well, we could even talk to like, someone like Owen Stone or somebody too. Yeah.
The bricks have to be engraved on site?
Yeah.
Yeah, because they're in the ground already.
Yeah. Otherwise, yeah, you could get work.
I think originally it was a run of all of them got done before they got set. Now they have...
Some did.
They're in a pattern where we don't want to have to pull them out.
More to pull one out. They have done that.
They have, but that isn't something...
The cost.
Yeah, well, and it's someone carrying that as championing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to mention that. I wasn't sure if the committee was aware how that worked.
Yeah, any other questions or comments about the parks meeting?
If not, anyone like to go ahead and make a motion? Just need a second.
I'll second.
Second. You call a roll, please, Stephanie.
Counselor Ash.
Aye.
Counselor Wagner.
Aye.
Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Hey, cassette agenda for approval. City Council Meeting Minutes for January 17, 2023. On page five through seven. Any discussion, questions?
I have one.
Hey.
I believe on page six, the second paragraph up, was talking about Metro West and paramedics, and Kim Norman suggested the city send a thank you note to Metro West. I think that was I.
Yeah, that's what this is.
Yeah, but here it says, Kim Norman requested it.
She did.
No, it was Donald that requested it.
Oh.
It was Donald.
You.
I thought you replied it. Okay.
No, it was...
She did, the next paragraph up, she did tell us about Metro West. No, everybody means short on ambulance people. In the next paragraph, I requested that we should probably send a thank you to Metro West.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. I was like, that's embarrassing.
Wrong Norman.
Wrong Norman. Got it.
The other, any other items or anyone to make a motion except these meeting minutes with the one change, correction? Counselor Norman's request?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Norman. You call a roll, please, Stephanie.
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Counselor Wagner.
Aye.
Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Counselor Ash.
Aye.
Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Any unfinished business tonight?
No.
No. Moving right into new business. Budget calendar.
So there's a couple, Counselor Wagner pointed out a correction on the budget calendar. The final date for department heads to get their submitted request to the finance director is March 20th of '23.
Makes sense.
Oh, yeah.
So she's hoping tonight for adoption of this and then appointment of the budget officer.
Anyone had a chance to look over the calendar for this year?
No conflicts this time.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a first.
I have a question.
Sure.
So last time, I thought we just had the quick first meeting and then three meetings. It looks like here there's an additional meeting. Is that just in case?
If needed.
Okay, so the 30th would be...
Yeah, so there's always extra dates.
Okay.
We shouldn't need more than three.
Okay.
Three regular timed ones, not the short.
Right, so the ninth, 16th, 23rd, for sure, and then 30th would be continued.
And then if it just rolls over.
Okay, perfect.
So...
Works for me.
Any ideas or would anyone like to nominate a budget officer?
Well, I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Move that we accept the proposed budget calendar fiscal year 2023, that's the 24, and appoint City Administrator Mitchell as the budget officer.
Motion's been made to accept the 22, 23, count 23, 24 budget calendar. And to appoint City Administrator Jill Zett-Michel as the chief officer. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second's been made. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Counselor Ash.
Aye.
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 Motion carried.
Okay. Right on to B, staff report. Utility rate adjustment. I'll see.
Well, I didn't see the first one. I just had this other, this is unrelated.
That's put down on the agenda.
Oh.
Under course limits. But you can always tell them about it now if you want.
No, I didn't see it, I didn't see it farther down. I thought it got, I thought it got missed.
But you can put it now if you want. It's fine.
No, that's fine. So, we've, most of you are aware, we've been working with the rates for, what, seven years now or so. And I think we've kind of gotten to the point here, Counselor Webb, kind of felt that we've gotten to the point that we refine the process and have everything locked down. It's best to have things in a policy. And so I tried to just keep it as short and sweet as possible. We've already been doing all of these things, but annual rate, every year, we adjust the rates based on the budget, which is probably our biggest rate philosophy item is budget-driven rates. Then the utility rate adjustment process. So this is what we've been doing. There's one thing missing from here, and I purposely left it out, was the rate review committee. So we had been doing that, and it served a pretty important purpose as we were moving along, because we were making these tweaks and deciding things. We've gotten to the point now where we just plug numbers in into the calculator, and it just tells us what the rate is. And it's my belief that we don't really need that step. I know one of the things that the late Bruce McNair liked about it, it was about public transparency, or people could see it, but nobody saw it. Nobody came to the meeting or, you know, it wasn't...
Well, this, this last time, all we did was bring the committee together, show the calculator with the numbers punched in. Everyone goes, yep, those are the numbers, and then we left, so. And we could still do that, but it is just an extra step.
It's an extra step. It takes, yeah, it takes time. There is, now that we've, we're creating this policy though, if we do make other tweaks to the calculations or add things to this, I think there would be value in council having like, having the Ad hoc Committee or doing a joint meeting with Public Works to discuss a change to, to the policy that would be reflected in a, in a resolution. And that's what I always, you know, initially, for the first few years, we were really kind of hammering out our, the calculations and that, making sure everything was above board. Well, then we got to the point where it's like, okay, now we're just plugging the numbers in. It's kind of elementary. So, anyway, left that out. Third point is simplified words. Anybody can read through these. Take these, take the numbers and generate rates. So if we all get wiped out, it's all new council, all new staff, all new Public Works Committee, thanks. Somebody should be able to read this and calculate rates. And this is exactly how we've been doing it. Most of this was, most of the, the primary chunk of this is straight out of the water and sewer or the rate studies, water and sewer rate studies that have been adopted by council. Fourth point is the 5% rule, that we only decrease rates if it decreases more than 5%. The difference of 5%. And of course, that, that is just on base in consumption, is nothing, does not affect loan, the loan rates. I've actually made a, a few just minor adjustments as I was reading through this, just some, a few things I would change if council, you know, approves this. There'd be a couple minor just wording, grammar, grammar changes. Specifically to the 5% reduction rule, just for clarity. And then the fifth point, the loan carryforward, which we did last year by offsetting any extra loan money by one fiscal year into the future. by off, offsetting any extra loan money by one fiscal year into the future. We did that last year. So B, we should have, as an example, we should have had about $14,000, somewhere around there that should have been deducted from the loan amount that we needed to recoup that will actually go into effect this year. And just also protects us because we ran into trouble with the sewer loan rate a little bit, a little bit last year. And so not only then does, do we, even if it's just a few thousand dollars, which isn't that much in the big scheme of things, what ends up happening is you have to add that in because you took it out of the loan reserve money. So you have to make that money up, plus you have to replenish the loan reserve, which is one year of loan payment is required by law. So basically, even if you dip a thousand or $2,000 in, or you just don't make a thousand or 2,000 in revenue, well, now you're, now you're doubly behind. So it's just basically a thing to try to prevent us from ending up in that situation. And that was something that we didn't really foresee because we had had excess money for years and years ever since we started this process. And then we finally had a situation where that wasn't the case with one of the loans. And then, yeah, you're, you kind of get double hit. You got to make that money up plus replenish the loan reserves, so. And then what you, what everybody has seen for the last couple of years, we've kind of revised the table. Of course, this is all in Excel, but just last year kind of refined it with the key that goes with it so that when we're presenting this to council committees or the budget committee, just always in this form and always with the key associated with it for, for clarity. And so that's the, that's the policy that I'm proposing. And if you guys to discuss, if you like it, like I said, I've already just made some notes, reading through it a couple of times today, just making a couple of grammar changes, no structural changes. But if, you know, council would like, Stephanie would gladly put together the resolution to bring to you with this attached to it.
So first of all, I'd like to thank Ben for all the work he's done on this and Dale also that's contributed to this process where we're at and backing up a little history of, of setting our rates, according to our budget. That kind of started in 2016, I believe, when we started with the facility reserves and started to be, becoming, what's the word I'm looking for?
Display responsible.
Display responsible. And so, you know, for the last seven years, it's been fairly, our consumers have, have benefited from it because there hasn't been a big influx of raised rates. In fact, we were able to reduce our rates several years ago after we paid off that.
Sure enough.
They were loan. But again, thank you for all the work you've done on this, Ben. And, and I think it's a good thing. I understand a little bit more than when I came in here four years ago, so. A lot more I understand it and.
I'd like to add a little, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I know sometimes staff kind of viewed me as the guy at the meat cleaver around here these budgets. And I, I think there is a legitimate concern when you're cutting it too close. And I think this 5% gives us this, that little operational margin in there so we're not into that situation. And I, I'm starting to believe you can actually get into a situation where you get this negative feedback loop. You, you make a move in your rates and then, and then next year you're a little short and you go, then you got to go the other way and we're doing this. We're going like this on the line, it's actually going on a steady path. And that's to Ben's point, if we, we do this 5%, the little one-off events that aren't reoccurring in here won't hurt us as much. But something that's big and reoccurring, then it will be reflected in our rates either positively or negatively. You know, we were just kind of brainstorming, well, you know, what would be a one-off, big one-off event? It'd be something that would, a major change in our salary position or something, which could go either way, you know, adding a person or losing a senior person to just sit down for a while. But I, I think this, I think this is a good idea to put that smoothing mechanism in there. And to the loan rates, you know, when we're doing budgets, we're doing forecasts and we're forecasting where we're going to be. And I think that's what ate our lunch. But by doing this one year lag behind, which we've already accomplished, so we won't, we really won't see it from here on out, we're actually using an actual number, a fiscal number that's, that's what it is.
And we actually have that, that money.
Yeah.
Sat there for a year. We actually had it and it sat there for a year. And that's, I added that verbiage that, you know, if they would be added together. So we may have, you know, if, just for example, we had that 14,000 in water loan that we would think would be going in, but if we came up 2,000 short this year in water loan, then it, it's still, it still offsets it. And so barring like some major decrease in customers, we would, we should never see two shortfalls in a year causing the loan payments to go, you know, to continue to rise or to dig into our loan reserve quite a bit, so.
Stephanie, are you just looking for a consensus from us to have staff?
Motion to direct staff to bring back a resolution to adopt the.
Okay. Anyone like to make a motion to move forward?
Staff.
Writing a resolution.
Congress said so move.
Said so move. Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second's been made, would you call a roll, please?
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Hubert?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. C, Public Works Committee recommendation, reservoirs.
Your committee's recommendation, so either you can present it or you can have Sheila.
Okay. So again, like I mentioned earlier in my committee report, Sheila Parrott is one of our committee members. Basically polled some of the surrounding, well, some surrounding cities down, you know.
Similar size too.
Similar size, yeah. And, and, and structures for tanks. And this is what we found that they're doing. Because I think, I said, we, we found out we were about 20 years out on our last, that, that was a cleaning of the main reservoir. The city crew does do external inspections. There's, there's a checklist on, on that, that visual inspections because there's strains and different apparatuses that keep from having contamination enter into our system. But as far as internally, so we've been 20 years out and we're like a little nervous about that, so. With this information, it was a recommendation from the Public Works Committee that we have our tanks inspected and, and they're, they're recommending that we do a, on a five-year frequency. And again, that'll probably also be kind of determined by the report once we have divers go in and look, what they find, you know, we'll know and we can prorate over 20 years, you know, how many inches are set in the regu. And maybe again, look at this report or additional reports of, is that comparable to these other cities or are we cleaner or, you know, or worse? So anyhow, that's the recommendation from Public Works Committee.
Do we have on record when the last time our reservoirs had been checked?
So no one that was he, inside, no one that was here was here then. But we did have reports that we, in the only documentation we could find, we gave to the Public Works Committee, it was over 20 years.
Wow.
The water's fine, it's tested fine, but there's a.
Have to test it every month from multiple sites to make sure it's all good.
So do we have somebody in mind to inspect this?
No, so probably what would happen is we would just, I wrote it down on my action items, is to get bids for the cleaning so that that can go into budget.
Oh.
2023 fiscal year, because it's not currently in the budget. Have any idea what it would cost. So then we'd put that in and do that, go up to one if it's approved in budget. The schedule would be right at the beginning of the fiscal year and get it over with and done.
And then if we move to require it every five years, that would need to go to a resolution or?
No, it would probably just be in budget with notes within the budget with it being a line item in the.
Include it all those years. Like a schedule.
I think it's a good idea.
Track.
I think it's a good start.
Yeah.
You know, at least we'll know they're clean or inspected, at least get a diver in there and see what we have.
Yeah.
And I think the diver is just going to tell us, you know, what he sees. Then we got to move forward from there with what to do. And then if we do it in another five years, that's going to start us showing us what's going on, yeah.
We'll have a record, anyone?
Do you like, Mr. Mayor, make a motion?
Absolutely.
We direct staff to move forward with lining up a diver, putting it into the next fiscal year budget for lining up a diver to do inspections on both of our reservoirs.
Thank you for that motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Ash. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
For.
Okay.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Hubert?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Moving right along, staff report. Choice of representatives or selection panel. We found on page 17.
So this request comes from me. We, at the Parks Committee meeting, three members of their Parks Committee that they want to have sit on the selection panel, which is really an architect or a landscape designer criteria review. So we went through criteria sheet of what we're going to base their points on. That gets published in the bid document so they know how we're going to be scoring them. And then the group would meet probably on a weekday for not more than a couple of hours, review the, and score the potential bids. We did talk, Parks Committee was discussing, so they're going to submit references to us. We can inquire about what we want those references to be asked, but whoever is going to do that questioning, should two of them be really close and we want to check their references? We have to ask the same questions to every reference and we can't really deviate. So it's kind of a locked in process, but I need two counselors typically have sat in on those to pick the architecture or landscape firm that would design the campground.
So I would love to do it as the park liaison. Only caveat there is if it's on a weekday, I can't do it until 3:30, but.
Okay.
If that would, if you think that would work, I would love to be considered.
I, I would also like to put my name in.
Okay. Is counsel okay with those being your two representatives?
I'm okay with it.
Counsel, say, all right.
Okay. Business from the departments. Police Department update, page 18 through 9.
So I might take this moment just to update you guys on the follow-up from your topics from the floor at your last meeting, Kim. So I did, after Kim came in the next morning, I reviewed, well, had Sean review the CAD calls because I'm not privy to the information on them to give me a synopsis of what call she was discussing or talking about. So we did review that. The home where they went, the person had in the pre, in previous time been in prison. He was no longer on parole. We, our police department had had so his, would have had him flagged. Now, of course, he does have history and is flagged because of his interaction with the medics. I did explain to Ms. Norman that there is no policy in place. The county chair are higher law enforcement than us and OSP is even higher than them. No one, they don't need our permission to come be law enforcement in our town. So I don't know where she heard it, we didn't really get into that. But I just clarified that there isn't a policy that prohibits or needs someone to get permission. I did explain how CCOM typically works is they'll call for Sean or Dave. We have communicated with CCOM when kind of we went down to the two guys and we're trying to cover everything. We did submit to CCOM kind of a schedule that shows when there are gaps and are, and the request that they inquire with Columbia County Sheriff's Office if they could assist. And if they can't assist and we are not on duty, to then go to OSP and ask if they can assist. On the CAD call that evening, within two minutes, both OSP and Columbia County Sheriff's were en route. So it did take the time that she said, but that really could not be avoided. You can't, because of our insurance, keep our officers, they have to have downtime, kind of like truckers, you can't keep them on call and on duty nonstop because that's just a safety concern. And I did explain to her that, you know, we have one person in the CAD. Um, and I did explain to her that, you know, we have one person in Academy that finishes in April. We have two people in medical and background checks. And then we discussed lots of things, the beacons for the ambulance and just all the other things we kind of both have in common and care about. So she seemed to not like that answer because it's not the answer that has law enforcement right there with them when they need them at this point, but we, it is a short window. Within 60 days, we'll have three officers that we can be scheduling to have less and less of those gaps where we need assistance from the county or the state. So I did, uh, talk, she did come in and we talked about that. Um, there was something else that was gonna, oh, and then as Sean says on the back page of your, um, report, we did have three candidates initially. They were very close because it is a public body panel with different members of the public. They were very close in scoring, so he wanted to do post-testing, which was writing reports and some other things that they'll encounter. Um, two kind of separated from the other one. Um, so we do have two applicants in medical and psychiatric testing. One's completed that and is now in backgrounds. One's still, you have to schedule them and one still got, I believe, the medical to finish with the schedule. Um, so we'll wait and see how those come out and then potentially do a offer of employment to one of them at this time.
Can I ask just a quick question?
Yes.
Do we have any officers currently employed?
We do. One's at Academy, so not really available to us.
Academy and then we're looking to hire a fourth.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And if you guys have any questions from their numbers, I can take those questions and have Sean get back to you. If, if something's tugging you or interesting.
Don't. Anybody else? Okay.
Glad to see your report.
Oh, thank you.
I guess we'll move into public works report.
Jeff intended to be here, but he came in with the crud and we didn't want him around. So. He's not on, right? He said he feels like crud, so I was like, well, you can always call in. Um, but I said, otherwise I'd just, uh, get any questions you guys have for him and then I'll have him respond back. So are there any questions or concerns on the report?
Looks like we're doing pretty good.
Has the council seen the new solar meters? Water meters?
You mean the radio reads?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Radio reads, yeah.
They, uh, replaced my water meter with one of those this year. And, uh, you, you would think that with, uh, uh, down in the ground and the meter cover on a, but they wouldn't work very good or.
Solar powered evidently, but soon as you lift the cover off, they, they have a reading. So.
Like those old fashioned calculators. They come to life when light shines on them.
Now you're, now you're getting, uh, yeah, now you're getting read right. Those things read down. Every drop gets read. The old mechanical ones to depending on the flow and the volume, uh, before they would, they would start reading. So.
I don't want a new meter.
You're paying, paying your fair share.
Because you don't have a leak.
Yeah, right.
It could definitely, but. But, uh, they're pretty neat actually. And it looks like we do five a month.
Yeah, that's probably just 60 a year. So.
Part of that's we have issues with, um, getting a hold of them, have had supply chain issues. Um, and then when we have new ones, we had, we had actually ran into that where Jeff had had the guys doing five a month for a couple of months, had more ordered, but they hadn't come in. And then we had like three or four homes that needed, new homes that needed them put in. So we're, uh, we're, we're restocked now. We've got a, we've got a full pallet. So.
We buy a hundred at a shot, I think.
Yeah.
And I don't know how many come. Yeah, something like that.
And I see public works have been working pretty hard as of lately on the alleys up on OEO.
Yeah.
And I'm sure those people that live there and, and those alleys are appreciative of the city trying to help and make that situation a little bit better. So I drive by it every day and, and, uh, they were working hard up on the, the middle alley.
Yeah.
Passed holes there the other day and was found her and trying to get that all set up. So it looks good.
Looks a lot better anyway.
Thank you for that.
Well, after they were done, it looks pretty good. We'll hope. But I was a little surprised. There's a little bit more infrastructure there than I thought for water that they opened up and cleaned out a little up, especially on top of the one for.
Up above.
Our alleyway.
She had kind of a water lily thing going on. And when they cleared that out of the ditch, because she came out and said, you can take it. You can take all of that. And they did. And the water just drained right away. So I think that was causing kind of a bog at the top that, that was slowly kind of.
Yeah.
Causing its own.
Water leaks in there somewhere, but, but yeah, there's even, there's some piping down the street. And then with the lift of rock in there, that has formed a small ditch alongside the road now that, um.
Heavy flows can maybe.
Yeah, heavy flow might have a problem, but.
Might have to see.
We need to probably do a little more ditching.
Yeah.
Fast improvement. I took a wonder residence that lives on the other alleyway. Kind of joking with them and, and they did get where I was coming from pretty quick. Oh, you mean my alleyway? And I go, yeah. Yeah, it's a lot better.
Okay.
You know, it isn't perfect, but it's a lot better. So. That's a good report on the water plant there.
Yeah.
Like we're not too far out from getting an outstanding performance status.
I know. There you go.
Get a certificate or sign?
I don't know.
Gold star.
Black.
More automate, automate, automation, I see there.
Yeah.
It's more work. So that's, uh, plant was quote, supposed to be a fully automatic plant at one time, but.
Well, I think they've always been nervous about it backwashing automatically because if it's something goes south, you know, and they wanted, they wanted it automated, but they also wanted the no-go option left in there so that if something was going and they could tell that they wouldn't be stuck.
Yeah.
Just kind of damaging. But yeah.
Did the guys ever monitor when we had several inches of rain period a couple, well, last month? Did they ever go up and pull those covers and, and check to some of them?
They did.
Okay.
So did Counselor Webb. He came and got a couple of maps and did his own. I just don't go on private property, but you can go pull some lids. And we did find a few anomalies that, um, right now the engineers are looking at. The one up there on, well, be second.
Second.
Second, we just saw like kind of a river running out from, straight out from a house, which we know isn't connected to that house's sewer. So it's got to be behind the house in some sort of catch.
Is it coming off?
Third and second.
Is that coming, is that the same water coming off of fourth and behind the Lincoln School?
I think it all cascades down, but really I think where this is coming from is where the manhole was underwater by deathlesses. It's the house across the street and down a little bit. It's behind his house where it's collecting water that's running out of the manhole on the second. So we have a little more investigating to do to figure out what's behind there, but we're going to have to go on someone's private property and notify and say, hey, we're here to find this. And. But there's some, some gallons we can remove. And then heavy flow, I mean, we've never pulled it in heavy flow and, because you can't really see under there to see, once it's heavy flow, it's kind of full. So.
So my question, if those several things are addressed this year, would that mitigate the problem that happens down on weed? Maybe in the next.
Nearly, we nearly stayed in the, in the lid of Klatsa, right? It barely bubbled over Klatsa. It did come out the clean out, but I believe that was popped by the people, not. And so we just put hay bales around it and caught so it wouldn't get into the stream system. We wouldn't get another finding. But all these little changes are incrementally showing difference. Springboard is really what's going to save us from it ever happening again, but ahead of that, we want to get all the grouting, all the pipe where it's missing and groundwater is coming. We want to address all of that anyway, but there will be the overflow pipe that would keep that from happening ever in the future. But we want to get all those things fixed because we don't want stormwater in the.
No.
Waste chemicals and it dilutes everything and makes the treatment harder, that whole bunch of reasons to get it out of there.
Okay. Yeah, it's kind of a death by a thousand cuts type of thing up there, but there was a few certain areas that, you know, like I reported back, that maybe the crew might want to spend a little more time with the camera down here, looking around, see if they can find something.
So that's the kind of goal is to go to that one, get permission, camera up and follow it with the GPS. Where is this? Where, what, what's leading to this collection of clear water? Cause the gentleman on third would always tell me his basement was full of water. He actually has a drain in his basement. So that is going to something. We don't have it on a map, but we're going to find out.
Good. And then, you know, we got to look at some of the manholes. I took videos and everything.
Oh.
Um, and, and, and the public works crew, they already had done inspections, uh, smoke testing, vacuum testing.
Yeah.
Combination of everything. Hopefully we can sit down. You know, I think there's some of the manholes are problematic of, they're cracked in the bottoms or Chris was talking about. You know, it's coming right around the line coming in and it's hard to get those grouted. So there probably is going to be some candidates to do the, the fiberglass lining. So I think keep chugging away at it here, you know? And, uh, we can, we can maybe prevent that from happening until we can get springboard done and.
Good. Yeah. Those were probably in the, in our priorities in the top 10 we.
Oh, yeah.
We started with the top 10.
Yeah.
So doing that right now. So it sounds like.
Yeah.
About made some phone calls about two Sundays ago. They had dirty jobs and they were cleaning manholes and lining them.
Oh, yes. That's awesome.
Yeah, it went into the pressure washer.
Oh, man.
Down. Some places it leaked. They, it's kind of, they drilled a hole and put some stuff in there and it slowed the other one down. Then they put a peg in the other one and plug it and had two chemicals they'd spring in there to seal them. And it was.
Oh, interesting.
Mike, uh.
That episode.
Who's dirty jobs?
Mike Rowe.
Mike Rowe. Yeah. He was down there.
Any other discussion or questions in the public works report?
I can see that the wastewater plant is working really well in the report. So. Yeah, that's good news. Kind of really getting a handle on it and. No more issues hopefully.
Right.
Keep the electricity on down there. Keep the pumps running.
But our chlorine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was Tetra go for a while?
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks Jeff for putting this report.
I will.
There too.
Yes.
Okay. Any ordinances or resolutions on correspondence staff report, average residential water use and official population, page 21.
Yep, just, uh, annual updates for counsel. Um, ran the, um, annual residential average and yep, stayed about the same despite being up. Um, we've got just over a thousand residential connections. They're three quarter inch. So things I, I don't include like blue hair in or. Yeah, school or.
Yeah.
Uh, Riverside, um, sort of things. So, um, but yeah, we're still, you know, I really, I find that's really impressive every time, every year when I put this in there that we're, you know, half or 60% of what the average household uses despite having a good clean water supply, ample water supply minus a couple months a year sometimes. Um, that, that we beat the national average. It's, uh, pretty good. Um, and then typo. It should be Redonia's population ending in 2022 is 4,000 or 2,419. And I should have went back and looked for a comparison, but, um, in my mind, it was around 2350 last year was the official, um, official population. And we have to report all bunch of housing statistics and other information on building permits and stuff every year, um, by state law to Portland State. So I don't know where all that goes, although I know the state uses it to make policy and allocate resources. So.
Yeah, it's important. We do. We get allocation and resources to us. Now that legal Oregon cities article had the breakdown of different things that come back to us and it's per capita. So.
So yep, that's where we, that's where we came out, came out this year. And of course the, oh, I don't remember in the letter, they, you know, the census does their thing. And it would seem like they go around and knock on every door, but the state of Oregon does not trust the US census numbers. They use a lot of that information, but they come up with their own numbers. And so I'm not sure, they probably use the sense, all the census data, but then they get housing data and other things we have to report. And I don't know how big cities in Oregon do it. But every year when this comes up, Josette and I have to sit down and say like, how many people are living in cars? How many people are living in tents? And weird stuff like that. And luckily we're a small enough town and we just kind of know and we can count on our fingers, you know, Bill, Bob and Jane. Yep. And how many long-term people at the campground do we have and those sorts of things? I have no idea how the big cities do it. They, they have to be guessing. They just have to be guessing. I don't know how they get that.
And I thought with the pandemic, the last couple, two, three years since 2019, with everyone staying home and staying safe, I, I'm curious to see if there was an increase in water usage. Um.
Well, and I, I actually speculated with Josette because our average monthly consumption had gone up, but we had, we've added all, we've added the connections with all these new homes.
Yeah.
So it ended up evening, evening out, but. And I don't know, maybe.
And then probably in the last two, August and September, the last previous two years, we've had a water curtailment.
Yeah.
For a month or two.
Every year.
That's probably made a difference too.
Yeah.
Somewhat.
I really expected it to be higher and we do average because we, even though we, our rate is something per thousand gallons. We do hundreds of gallons. That's how the meters are bred and that's what we actually bill. So if it's $2 and, you know, in the master fee schedule, it says $2.10 per thousand gallons. We actually charge $2 or 21 cents per 100 gallons. That's how, that's how the billing software is set up and, and, and how it actually works out. But it's actually glad, I'm glad it stayed the same because we've got a bunch of forms. And then when new people come in and set up accounts that are in town, they've got to reset it. And when we even bumped it from 4,800 to 4,900 in the past and just getting in that. You, you just have muscle memory and Cassandra's punching in the wrong number when people set up a new account. So at any rate, it's actually to the efficiency of the organization that it, that it stays the same.
Think you can also see why I always push back on, there was previous discussions about trying to make ultra conservative rates for water consumption. I'm like, we're already conservative. We're not, we're not even meeting the national average. So I guess the vannies are living in a rainforest where you're wet eight months out of the year. Don't need any more water.
But we don't, there, there's a lot of other things. We have some swimming pools, three or four swimming pools. But.
Typically they're buying from the fire department.
You know, we, we don't have, we don't have, yeah, we don't have a ton of that. People aren't so much into watering yards because they've got natural yards.
Don't really need to here.
Yeah.
August.
Yeah.
That's when I go going.
Less car washing. I'm from Florida and like you drive down the street of one neighborhood and 10 people are out washing their car any given day. It's wild.
Yeah. It's going to get beat up from here to.
Yes.
And so why wash it?
I'm not going to wash my car till July.
Right?
The point.
I wash mine when I'm going somewhere and it needs to look nice and that's about it.
So any, any questions about water or population?
I'll just comment on PSU's data is very useful. Working for community action team when we do need to do any kind of, of data. It's more updated than the census, which is out of date by the time they publish it anyway. It's very useful and, and it's important to, to do because it is more current. It's done annually. So I know it's a lot of work for staff, but a lot of people utilize that information. So thank you. And our town is getting bigger.
It's now.
Yeah. Well, I'll make a point in next year, I'll remember we get our official. We'll actually get a, your actual number. So.
Thank you, Ben.
Ben, I'm going to slip out and here and let you guys wrap up.
Okay, staff report. Hold the date for city county dinner.
Just information only so you guys can put it on your calendars to.
Okay.
Does staff usually send somebody or?
I've gone in the past with you guys. Not like carpool or anything, but just all of us show up there together and represent. Usually sometimes Rick and I have to figure out who's going to give a little update from the city. If Rick's not there, then I would do that. But yeah. And it's kind of neat just to meet your counterparts and other, hear what's going on in other towns. It's typically when the county kind of, if they have anything to talk to all the cities about, which one of the things I'm thinking in the rounds of the city county dinner that's going to be coming up is the need for a 911 system upgrade. That's been batted around between Columbia County Emergency Management and Columbia 911. They kind of hired a consultant and got certain estimates. And then some city councillors from SCAPUs were not happy with that. And they started doing their own survey and finding out there's much more reasonable versions for a county our size with only 50,000 people. Other than the tens of millions. And so maybe that will be coming down the line. Hopefully that the county as a whole can get on one page for that, stuff like that.
Have the other councillor have been getting those emails from the.
Is it from Tyler? Is it from Tyler?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Hmm, I.
I do not. I know about it, but I, I just, that's from following it on base.
Well, and I can ask him to include the rest of council too. It's just kind of people that were interested in it or back and forth. He sends them out just kind of like, here's where we're at. The can, he did come and interview Sean and interview the city for like what the city's needs would be, what the police department's needs. He's gone to every community and done that. Because like one of the items that would have to be replaced is all, all the police radios. Like consultants telling you, you needed 11 to 15,000 dollar radio. And reality is like a five to seven, a town like ours, that will make a huge difference. We don't have extra money in the police budget for brand new equipment, you know? All of that. So that'll be a big discussion point, I think. For the whole county as a whole to figure out.
Yeah, I've read some of that discussion. You thought, I mean, it kind of, kind of changed because it was a concern about right there in the community of the lack of coverage or something around the school or something.
Yeah, there's some dead zones.
Yeah, and, and to get better coverage and, and then transition to new equipment. And it was like, woo, yeah, this is, there's some big differences in prices here or providers. So.
Yeah.
I won't pay attention. I mean, the, the impact is.
Right. At some point the city council may have to take a stand of which side just financially they would be able to be on.
Yeah.
Because you can't really tax the whole county for something we all can't afford. Our kids and grandkids will be paying it off and then it's going to be outdated. That's the other flip side is kind of the selling the huge shiny version always doesn't pay out in the end. Because you're re-upping it 20 years from now. I think they're a good thing to go to if you're on council.
Yeah, I, I imagine by the 21st, our next council meeting, 21st. We ought to know where it's going to be held at. So.
Yeah, we'll have more information by then.
I plan on going. If anyone wants a ride, I'd be glad to give them a ride.
I'm not saying I won't carpool. It just hasn't been that way.
Well, I will be down there anyways.
More than two of us in a car though, right?
No.
Because of what you guys talk about.
Yep, public notice.
As long as we're talking about the beautiful drive, I'll look at her.
Honest and just talking about things and not business. Can't talk about or just deliberate there either.
Right, right.
So, okay.
You can all jump in a bus if you wanted to.
Use the green exemption. It's green to have three in the carpool.
The green.
Sure the state will agree.
Yeah, I'm sure they'd put it all over that.
Okay, city administrator report.
Hey, so as was stated earlier, I did attend and worked through the process with. And then kind of sat and discussed other things with them as well. But. So that's moving along. I'm finishing the timeline. There's a whole bunch of specific timelines you have to hit. And so I'm making sure it all winds up before we go out to publish for it. City staff and the city engineers have been talking with the ODOT managers. We're hoping we get better results. They did have an internal meeting to talk about River and Umatilla and how they could assist us to having those be successful. Spencer's a whole nother deal. Originally they claimed if we stopped 15 feet short of the intersection, we would not have to do the ramp. Which we said, great, we will stop 15 feet short. And then they looked at Ariel and said, well, it looks like you've done some remediation already. So you're going to have to put the ramp in. So we put the ramp, we get the ramp designed through them, approved through them, poured, inspected. And then the person that told us we were going to have to do the ramp sent Angie and I an email that said, you were supposed to stop 15 feet short. How did this happen? And then you look back and in December of 21, she told us we had to install the ramp. So we're PDFing all those streams of emails to let them see their own picture of how they confused us themselves, whatever. So our engineer and I are of the same belief that if Spencer shouldn't have a ramp, then they should allow us to tear it out and we should be done with Spencer. Like that should be the end of it. So that's what we're going to try and go for. Because one section of their ADA engineers was adamant that it be redesigned and rebuilt. And we're like, we're not redesigning it. You approved a version. We're sticking with that or we're pulling it out. We're done. Like, so we're going to kind of push back on that. Robert and I are of the same belief that no. And then I did ask her the question of who could I talk to at ODOT to understand why the decision was made to put this onerous lawsuit task on the communities that are asking you for money because they can't afford to pave their own streets? This doesn't seem like a good fit. And she was going to get me that name. So I'll ask somebody about it. So that's where we're at. We went and reswept and put new barricades up. So when they show up, they won't fail to inspect them. We went and reheated up and re-tamped all the cold patch around the ramp on River so that no one should be able to dig it out with their heel of their boot. And so that's where we're at with ODOT. The Grand Sands Demo Project. As I stated, I believe the last one, we were meeting with the electrical. I'm still waiting for the bid from our electrician. We're having some issues because we're trying to get the cabinet. Has to be up out of the flood. We're going to put it on the east end of the snack shack building. So we're, we're having to look for a horizontal cabinet, not a vertical cabinet. Because when we get vertical, it sticks down into the flood, even if we're up at the peak of the roof. So that's kind of our hit little hiccup, but we're going to figure it out. And then I did talk to Dean and Kim about the beacons. They can't remember those existing beacons. Neither one of them can remember those existing beacons being on. They're on in the breaker panel. We don't know if someone has a remote, like whoever, the history going down to them. And when the school transitioned after FEMA, nobody can figure out how they're activated. So potentially what we're talking about is in the new plan, we're leaving electricity for beacons. That probably will look like some sort of ground beacon. Because Dean said right now, when they have to, they throw kind of puck lights out. And so maybe there's ones that are installed 100 feet square apart because that's what the poles are. And then have some sort of cage for safety, but can be beakoned on in the new system if we need them. We are also keeping the electrical for the irrigation pump because that is a water right of the cities. And we don't want to lose that water right. So we're, we're going to keep that having electricity, even if we have to do a new pump. Fine, but keep that. And then the connection for the jump boxes, which is used at different festivals. It's like a special plug for the generator jump boxes. And then the skate park lights and snack shack. And then there'll be a whole part of the panel for future. If we ever did put a picnic shelter there has been, has been talked about. Be electrical to be able to plug, plug it in crock pots or boom boxes and then lighting. Decommissioning the old dump. I do have a follow-up meeting this month with them. So we'll see what, if we fit into their orphan site program criteria or not. I did also want to mention that I didn't have on my thing, but it triggered, something triggered me today in an email. They will be doing the seismic relocation, UNAVCO in March. And we will leave the original seismic site running through April. And then he will come back and he will take, he will take it all below ground. So that that fenced in seismic site is no longer in the airport runway area. It'll be where the UVO has theirs kind of down towards Chad Hewitt's hangar. That's kind of off the radar of the state airplane board as findings. Because every year we get a finding that that thing's in the wrong spot. Well, it's been there for 30 years. We understand. We're finally going to get it moved. So the lake docks, I did have them come and do the dive. They were great. They were super informative about what it looks like under there. Basically the tires are just kind of rotting off of the stanchions. So they basically have a bolt system that runs through three stacked tires filled with foam and encapsulated. And that bolts to the bottom of the dock. And in a couple of, there was just the bolt left, like the tires had fallen away. And so their bid came back at $39,000, which is, we don't have it anywhere. Parks budget's tight because of kind of all the danger trees we've had to remove out of parks. And having to have, when Tim removes a tree, we have to have a spotter. So we've had an extra person paid out of parks to watch and make sure he's safe. And someone's there with him when he's taking down trees. So I proposed to them that I need a limpet along bid. I need something so when people stand on that front edge, it doesn't tip through this summer. And then I want to go for a restoration and enhancement grant from ODFW, which they specifically have for Angler Act. I think we fit in the criteria good and they were in the initial docks getting placed. And I talked to their representative and I got an account so I can get on there and start filling out an application. But that doesn't until July. So I had Allison at Oregon Marine Construction give me a, hey, if we just have to put some floats in it that aren't, aren't going to have to be ripped out and redone because I don't want to do that either. Whatever they put on, I want it to work with the plan, the bigger plan, but limp us along through the season. And then we're waiting on the bolts. We have the clips for installing the grading on the ramps. So we're just waiting on the bolts. We've ordered those. We're just waiting on those to get here. And then staff will put in the new grates and get the broken plywood off there. And the arbitration, I contacted all of you in different ways. Some of you walked in my office, so I sent email. But on February 1st, we did receive communication from our attorney that the city prevailed in arbitration. And that that decision's binding and we don't have anything else to do. Each party in the collective bargaining agreement pays for their own legal fees. But the association will pay all the arbitration fees. So all of his time and effort and whatever that costs, they'll have to pay that.
So we get reimbursed?
No, we haven't had to pay for any arbitrator fees. In the CBA, it says each party pays their own legal.
It's.
So that's, yeah.
Legal and arbitrator too.
Yeah, yeah. We will be getting the trees from the Small Woodlands on Friday. And I have an email and call into Umberto. So Dale and I met last Saturday and walked all of the mill site property with Umberto from Ramos Reforestation. And talked to him about, you know, just picked his brain and showed him all the places we need trees. He was really gung ho. We did talk about spraying because originally we were going to spray before. On his advice, he said we should wait a year after they're in and do like a release spray. So spray around them and give them a better chance on the second, third, fourth year to grow to a height where then they release. He said spraying too close to the time you're planting, there still is that potential that the tree may be affected by that and we didn't want that. And he said, a lot of people have good luck with the relief spray, which is just spraying the things encroaching on them within, after that first year.
I was like a good piece of advice.
That was like a good piece of advice.
Yeah. So we will, we are talking to him about doing a relief spray on just the upper section of the wedge of Aurora Bullmire where we planted fir trees, not where the native ash and vine maple and all that stuff went, but just where those fir are to kind of knock down that extra big grass. But we'll probably be, end up weed whacking carefully all the stuff on the lower portion. Just because we'll put pipe around it, weed whack and then remove the pipe for the ash trees, the vine maple and the other things we have down there.
Oh, that's a thousand Doug fir?
Yes, that's our order.
And they'll pop them in in one day?
Yes, that's the plan. If I, he said he would cut, when we get the trees, he would come plant the next day. So we'll see if that's true. If he's out here Saturday planting, then Umberto's a truth talker.
Perfect time to plant right now.
And then the other planting, Tim's gung ho to get the rest of the trees planted. The new ones at Spencer that are replacements for Noni's tree and the two JR's tree that, Noni's tree got hit by the jamboree folks, right? Gut. And then JR's, JR's tree just didn't have the water bag on it enough time. They're a little more sensitive, we found out. So we ordered replacements for those. And then the ones along Hawkins Park that ODF told us to plant for the riparian. And so I've been talking to Maggie and we're on the same page, planting them a little further back in case she gets a riprap grant. So that they're not as close to the edge, because it is, the bank is undercut there. I don't know if you've ever stood on the North Street side and looked back, there's a good section where the water's carved out. Also related to Hopkins and trees and everything. Dale participated in a, came to an ODFW meeting at Dewey Pool. For 15 years, they've been knocking on the door of the city of Renonia. Multiple times, he said 15 years. I had to remind him, I've only known him for three, but didn't matter. They really want a fish ladder during the time when we have the Dewey Pool dam up. For all species of fish, juvenile, not so much as mature fish will come there, but at lamprey, all the things. This could be a good moment. We did take it as a positive moment because the wall on the far side is really failing. And so if we can get ODF skin in the game to use, redo that wall and incorporate a fish ladder into it, that works great for us. The other thing is, is that at the same time, we could potentially beef up and fix the Dewey Pool side. So where we've all talked about the seating is sliding down and kind of everyone's like, oh, you're, we're in the, working in the stream, maybe we shouldn't. So it kind of turned, was a positive spin on it. There were two grants, so we met on like a Thursday. And on the next Tuesday, there were, there was a grant closing for design money. So we get out of the meeting on Thursday. Robert, the engineer, calls me and he's like, I want to put in for these design mon, the design money. And I'm like, Robert, it's like three days and it's doing, he's like, I, we can, I think we can do it. And I'm like, I guess go for it. So within a day and a half, he had an application for the Dewey Pool design money and an application. And these are just requests, right? The Dewey Pool one just wasn't asked, had no skin in the game money from the city of Renonia. He also asked for one for the design features of removing the sewer pipe at the waterfall because we have to remove that. And they actually want us to amend the earth there. They don't just want us to remove our asset, they want to make that even less of an impediment to fish species. And so he put in an application for that. And within that had $50,000 that would be coming from the CDBG, right? So that would be skin in the game, should we get a, go for the construction funding, that's money that would already be part of the construction. And it would be a legitimate use of CDBG to further all the parts. So he got those in, he brought them in, we uploaded them, signed them. And so we'll see if we get design money, but it doesn't hurt to ask because we don't have any money to put towards it now. So these two springboard, that kind of helps us with that. They did let us put the culvert design at Adams where the steel plate is. And CDBG let us put that design because we're removing the sewer pipe in the design. So we believe they will let us also do the construction of it. We're interviewing tomorrow morning, I'm interviewing with Brandy, two candidates that had applied for the library assistant position. I think at the last meeting, I told you that the library assistant we hired like three months earlier moved. Just her husband got a different job and they were out within like a week and a half. So we did have two applicants that turned them in on time, seemed to like what Brandy's looking for and her staff. And so we'll be interviewing them tomorrow morning. And then don't forget, next Monday, you have the council rules review.
6:30?
Yeah. Does anyone have any questions for me?
I don't, I'm pretty caught up. You have citizen of the month this month?
Are we?
That's for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna inquire.
I'm gonna pick my student of the month for Friday.
She just always asks my advice, not that I'm expecting. She just, she's.
More background info when I already have a leaning, to be clear. It's more like, what else have they done than the things I know about?
Right.
Knows all the things.
Do we have a list of all of the citizens of the month? I'd ask them.
Yeah. Stephanie has.
Send you a copy?
That'd be great. And it'd be really nice if we had it like posted somewhere.
Posted here?
It's an Excel spreadsheet.
Oh, yeah.
Like a plaque or something.
And then put like a little gold each month? I can look into it.
Lisa will hook you up with that room.
She loves grand.
She loves grand, hopefully.
No, that's the thing, every month.
It's only about $5 to add a little thing.
Once a bit here and then this year.
Oh, yeah.
So you're only really doing it once a year.
Twelve.
I don't know. I have perpetual plaques for my rock clubs and she only charges $5 to add.
Well, it's not, it's not the cost, it's the burden of having to do it all the time. You're lucky you get the two printed copies every month. It's just, you guys are going to get new plaques up there, so. It's just not realistic that I'll be able to keep up.
Oh, go ahead. How are we amending our council list? Is Councilor Wagner taking JR's slot or how we?
What are you talking about?
The order of the.
Yeah, the order of the council.
To just be in the rotation.
Yeah. That's how it's always been, it just gets replaced. I mean, if there's two people, then they just take those two spots. But it hasn't.
I just want to make sure for people new where they're at in the order, so they're not surprised.
Well, she still probably doesn't know where JR was in the order.
Well, JR was behind her.
It's rare that all of you guys know where you're at in the order.
Yeah, I just found out.
It's changed because.
It comes faster than you expect to.
Every month.
If you're wondering, just ask Stephanie, she'll let you know.
Yeah, I'll send it today.
The Excel spreadsheet is live, right? Like if I go back in my email and open it, it'll be updated to now?
No, I'll, I'll send it to you guys.
Okay.
I'll PDF it.
I didn't know if it was like a shared, like a Google.
No, I think she's been the only one that had to have it until now.
So then yes, I would like an updated copy too.
Okay.
And then I don't have to go back in a minute.
Just send it to all of us.
Yeah, I'll just send it.
Okay.
Before, we haven't read out of people, so.
No.
We've got 2,419 to choose from, right? And that's only in city limits, so.
At least half of them are outside of city limits.
Exactly.
So far.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just go anywhere.
Yeah.
Hillsborough.
St. Helens. Burns, there you go.
Sky's the limit. Does it have to be in the state?
Okay, well, thank you for your report, Josette.
Sure.
Items from the mayor and counselors.
I have a little something. So as a citizen, I had an issue with water. Sitting in my home, all of a sudden we heard gushing. And I got a advice from somebody to help the city and let them know that I have a water leak somewhere. I did. The city was out within maybe, you know, Public Works, two, two of them, within 45 minutes or so, maybe an hour. Checked our meter, took a picture. They can't help us at all, which is, which totally understand. But they, I just, I really appreciated the fact that they were out so quickly. It came out a second time because I don't remember why, we, we called just to check and see, you know, how fast it was running, that's what it was, and get an explanation of where we were and how fast. My husband had installed, thank goodness, a remote on-off for the bulb joint for the access on our side, not on the city's. And so, you know, push a button, turns it on, push a button, turns it off. Every household should have one like that. We need to figure out how to fund that because it has saved, it saved us a ton. We did manage to find the leak Saturday at about 1:30, middle of the stinking yard. Well, not quite middle, but yeah, about two feet down.
So was it a backyard spigot?
No, it was on that line to the back hydrant. There was a elbow, elbow joint that we think with the wind and the trees, the root was right there and it, it put pressure because it was moving and it popped that joint, thank goodness, it was just that. Still hard to get to, still hard to deal, you know, dig in and whatever. It is resolved. The pipe upward is holding and will fill in the hole. But yeah, it's, the responsiveness of our city water, in fact, he said, if, if something fails on your, your shut-off, call us, we will, we'll come over, it doesn't matter what day, what time. I mean, I really, our city is pretty amazing. And our employees are incredibly dedicated and I, I truly would like to, kudos to our Public Works Department, thank you very much.
Yeah, I agree, 100%.
Yeah.
We do, do you know we offer a 50% forgiveness on clean water if you get right on it, so.
Well, we, we were on it within about six hours. And that was exactly why I had called, because I, I didn't even think about doing it ahead of time. You know, it's like, oh, well, we got a leak, we'll just be paying a big water bill. I'll be interested to see how much water was really gushing. It was, and thank goodness for mold holes. That's how we ended up finding it.
Coming out of the mole hole?
Well, yeah, you kind of had to go around like this to follow where it was going, but we finally did that. But yeah, if not for that, it would have been a lot more work because it was bubbling up. Once you got down to about 12 inches, the pipes. Sorry, but yes, thank you.
Anybody, Dale?
So yeah, that was an interesting meeting with ODFW on the Dewey Pool situation. One thing that was kind of stressed to us was there's a lot of money in the pipeline right now. Evidently, it's the infrastructure bills being spread. I know also the watershed councils, there's a lot of money going into those programs. The upper and lowers formed a partnership that's, I know, I sat in on the meeting, but the audio was really lousy for half the meeting. So there's, there's a lot of money right now and that's what they were stressing to us. And they were like, and you know, if you have to go in there and replace something under state law, then you are triggered to have to provide the passage. They do have a regulatory hammer. It don't sound like they're real eager to use it, but we, we were kind of putting on them that, ooh, yeah, that would be ugly because we get blowback when we're just a week or two late putting the dam in. Well, it's kind of interesting seeing, they're, they're really pushing to, I mean, they're wanting juvenile passage through there. I mean, at the, at the whole higher bar across the, because I know, I think the standard is you got to be less than six inch lifts for juvenile passes, so. Whereas an adult, you know, you can get away of a foot and a half probably or better. So. So we'll see where we end up with that one. They seem to think there's a lot of money there. That's what they were telling us.
Yeah.
And what were we, we were in the.
Worst top priority list.
120 or something list. They have a list in the state of out of 20,000. And we're in the top.
It was very serious, but how, it's taken 15 years.
Yeah. He was adamant about.
Thank you for not answering the door.
Dale, a juvenile lift would be twice the expense probably.
I have no guess.
We talked about, because we do need to redo that wall.
Yeah.
Basically, behind that wall would be really shallow cascade up and cascade down. And we'd go further out of the swimming area before the release. So we aren't releasing any fish that use it right into the kids, you know, splashing and kicking and kayakers.
Probably be passed.
We create kind of a swale area on the bank further up, you know? So the potential's there and.
Yeah, I think it's basically a, a slow, slow stream bed that you build alongside the normal channel here to our pool height.
Yeah.
That then water goes down and we'd have to, you know, control the weir boards to control the volume and all that.
Well, and then they also talked about having it just blocked during the winter. So during high flow, it doesn't just gets just cleared out. It would just be like, boards would go in when the dam came down and then it would just be like a channel that's sitting there with nothing in it during the high water events. I'm sure water could get in there, but not flow through it and undo the work or undo the, because one of the things they talked about is it would have stuff in it so they could get behind and kind of relax and then get back in the stream and go. Kind of, they like nursery little pools of no flow where they can rest before they keep going, so. Something similar to that.
This is might be, I know questions stupid.
No, go for it.
These have like lids so that.
Yes.
Yeah, so the kids couldn't mess with it. Yeah, we talked about. Kids out of it, or it may have like. Fence where there's no. We would be paying close attention to the vandalism-ness of it.
It was interesting, they were, how many people do you have here using?
One guy's like, well, how many people is even here doing this?
Everyone.
And we're like, mm, 200, 250 sometimes. And he's, and Andrew Neme, who's the head of our engineering firm, says, the problem isn't how many people, the problem is there's money for fish right now. There's no money for aquatic centers. We're not, we're not looking to create a pool. That is not why people historically have come here. It's outdoors, it's river, it's picnic, it's whatever. But we're just like, yeah, buddy, we're not, what? We're not gonna just get rid of the dam and tell everyone to go somewhere else where you can.
Probably.
And they were asking that about, well, is there other places for people to swim? And I go, yeah, in the same river downstream here. It's, because they were concerned about people being in the stream even.
Really?
To that extent, about for fish, it's a deterrent for fish movement and.
And then Dale was like, actually, I've. And then Dale was like, actually, I've found some, uh, some cooling mechanism. And he starts trying to do all of his data and the guy's like, oh, well, I'd like to see those numbers, you know, kind of. We're like.
End of the meeting goes, keep taking those stream temperatures though.
Without that pool, there'd be almost no water in the river.
Right.
Fish, I mean, it's.
Well, and there'd probably be no water down at the confluence either. I mean, do you know what I'm saying? Like it would still come in the same flow, but it would be even shallower. I think if you let it all out, it would be even shallower.
I, I, I think there's some science there that hasn't, that hasn't quite caught up yet. Because I pointed out to them, I pointed out this last year because we didn't get Dewey Pool in till like first week in July. So we actually had some warm temperatures and I had already started taking those spot temperatures at the confluence. And I noticed when I was taking them, uh, before the dam went in, the differential between the, the Halum and Rock Creek was, you know, certain amount of degrees. Well, then I knew when the dam went in and then afterwards, that differential increased. Well, they're both getting the same solar inputs, just one's got a dam now. And we'd suspicioned this before, few people anecdotally had taken temperatures above the pool and then down the pool and they go, it seems like I'm seeing about a degree difference here. But you know, it's anecdotal, not real scientific, but that's what mine's data was showing. It was one point two degrees difference cooler. And I think, like I said, I think there's a lot of science, but we're finding out because of the hyperreact discharge, and here again, where the state's probably behind is that's good, discharging into the ground and getting that underground flow is coming into the river at ground temperature and in some places below ground temperature because of trans evaporation effects. And Dewey Pool, that's probably the same thing because it charges the hyperreact zone. There is flow, it, it only makes sense. You've got a positive pressure here because of the height. It's flowing underground and coming back into Rock Creek down below and it's scrubbing temp off. There's all the research if you read it, ponding water creates, makes it heat. I mean, if you look at, I read some paper and you had to have like forty foot of depth for, to get the offset for solar radiation and all this stuff for it to actually be cooler. But there's something going on here that I just don't think the science is quite caught up with yet, so. Because I pointed out to them, it wasn't that many years ago, ODF and W was here with, well, Liza Waltonley, different partners. With a cat in Rock Creek, yard now, large woody debris, opening up the streams where fish could get through. So the theory was.
Right, now they want you to leave everything.
And, and beaver dams were bad and now beaver dams are great and so.
They don't have the spawning grounds.
Oh, anyhow, they didn't really like my pushback. They just assumed our dam.
They didn't like mine either because after like the sixth time of him saying fifteen years. I reminded him, I said, sir, I've only known you for three years. So can we start the clock now? We're all here, willing to talk about it. And he's like, well, we've been knocking on this door, real upset about it. And I said, well, the door's cracked open. Actually, you've got your foot in it. Your foot is blocking the door for talking. And then Sean rolls up the thing and Dale goes, oh, great, here come the cops. And I said, I looked at the guy, I said, I called the cops. You'd get rowdy. And he starts laughing, finally laughing. And then it kind of broke the tension, but I was like, man, he's just beating this dead horse. We're the people standing here. I wasn't here fifteen years ago. But somebody was, didn't listen to you and you're really mad about it, so.
Even the district bio.
Yeah, even.
Something about, you, you need to get over that.
Really let that go or something. And we were all like, wow, if Robert's saying that, maybe it's true. Robert doesn't say stuff like that. But yeah, I think it was a good meeting and turned out good.
We'll see. Just wanted to mention too, uh, around the lake, city crew, probably ten. I've been taking down some of the danger trees around there, so if you're seeing trees down, laying in the lake, that's why they're there. And good to be in the lake. The fish, I was hoping you'd get them a little more in the lake, but some of those were kind of, you had to cut them how you could cut them and that's what they went. They're, they're, they're still going to serve good purpose. I suppose that's it.
Thank you, Dale. Anything else? I think we're ready for an action item summary.
Okay, so we're, I'm going to send a letter to Metro West. And staff's going to bring back a resolution for the utility rate smoothing percentage mechanism. We're going to get some cleaning reservoir bids, diving bids for budget. And it's noted that Councilor Wagner and Councilor Ash will be on the selection panel for the lake campground architect pick. That's anything else? Tonight.
Good, so. We'll have a place for the county city dinner.
Yeah, we'll bring that back.
It'll probably be in your emails, but yeah.
And remind everyone, next Monday evening at six thirty, we'll have a workshop on council rules. Anyway, good meeting tonight.
And I will adjourn it at nine o'clock PM. Meeting adjourned.